I'd like to call this meeting of the New Hampshire County Board of Education to order. Please stand for the invocation, remain standing for the flag of allegiance and the Potion of Colors. We're going to have our invocation. Lord, we thank you for the day, this opportunity to gather here tonight to discuss the educational needs of our young people in our community. We thank you for the opportunities that are presented to us. We, once again, thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy and make us ever mindful of the needs of others. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Tell her, three, four.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleam? Whose bright and bright stars fill the fairway this far? For the red parts we watched, first of gall and fish drink, and the rocket's red glare flew over the singing air, and it proved through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, you may be seated. At this time, the National Anthem was performed by College Park Elementary School, Principal Maria Green, Coral Instructor Carrie Avalas, and there's a microphone of Avalas right behind this young lady right here. If they'll pass it down, give us their na- well, not their name or rank, we'll wait for the next group for that, the name and the grade that they're in.
I'm Carrie. There we go. I'm Carrie Avalas, I'm the music teacher at College Park.
I'm Douglas White, and I'm leader of College Park Elementary School.
I am Joshua, and I'm a leader at College Park Elementary School.
I'm Amber, and I'm a leader at College Park Elementary School.
I'm Ray, and I'm a leader at College and College Park Elementary School.
I'm Logan, and I'm a leader at College Park Elementary School.
I'm Tyson, I'm a leader at College Park Elementary School.
My name is Angel, and I'm the leader at the College Park Elementary School.
I'm Jenna, and I am a leader at College Park Elementary School.
We appreciate all these leaders here with us tonight, we certainly appreciate it. Now, the cadets, the Potion of Colors was performed by John T. Hogard High School with Principal Dr. Steve Sullivan, Instructor Lieutenant Commander Mark Hayfer, if I did that right, and Richard Gishago. If the cadets would come forward, give us your name, rank, leave out the serial number, leave out the date of birth, just name, rank, we know you're from Hogard.
Senior honor, Lieutenant Junior Reed, Michael Bumble.
I'm a sophomore at Hogard, and I am a Seaman.
I'm a junior at Hogard, and I am a Ensign.
I'm Cadet Jesse Thompson, and I am a Seaman at Hogard.
Now, go back down there, give us your names, I didn't hear the names.
Michael Bumble.
Jeffrey Waskowitz.
Hunter Elliott.
Jesse Thompson.
Thank you very much. Well, that was the highlight of the meeting, it's all downhill, it's all downhill after that. Ms. Adams, would you call the roll, please?
Donald S. Hayes.
Here.
Jeanette S. Nichols.
Here.
Janice A. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Tammy J. Koval.
Here.
Lisa Ista.
Here.
Derek G. Hickey.
Here.
Edward B. Higgins.
Here.
Thank you, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Any changes, Dr. Markley?
I have two changes, please delete Item D, and please delete the closed session.
Move for approval of the revised agenda.
Item D under new business?
Yes, Mr. Bull had to be called away in a family emergency.
And the closed session. You made the motion, Ms. Kavanaugh?
Second.
Yes.
Motion, second, any comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approved, thank you. Item three, approval of the minutes, our regular meeting minutes from August 5th, 2014, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item B, interim meeting minutes from August 19th, 2014.
Move for approval, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approved, thank you. Item four, recognition of achievement, Ms. Quaterbaum.
Good afternoon, everyone. Our first recognition for this evening goes to a College Park Elementary School student by the name of Katie Fox. Katie recently competed at the National American Miss State Pageant where she earned the title of 2014 National American Miss North Carolina in the ages four through six division. As part of her prize for winning, Katie received books and school supplies, and this is the cool part, she donated her share of her winnings to College Park, which included over 600 books and many boxes of supplies. And in November, Katie will go on to Anaheim, California, where she will compete on a national level. So if Katie and her parents are here, and Ms. Green, if you would stand up, we would love to recognize you all. Katie, please come forward. We have a princess among us. Let's let you go talk to Mr. Hayes, we're meeting. Congratulations, Katie. Katie's parents, are you all here? Congratulations to you two.
Thank you very much.
She is a beautiful girl.
Thank you, she's living in Los Angeles.
Okay, good luck, good luck. We'll see where she comes out. Thank you. And now, we will have Ms. Jane Lott, who's a representative from the American Heart Association, who will make some special presentations, Ms. Lott.
Thank you so much. This generation of children is forecasted to have a shorter lifespan than their parents. This is the first time this has ever happened. And the American Heart Association, we're working hard in the schools to change that statistic. So when a school volunteers to do a jumper hoopsie band, what we do is we send in educational materials so that not only are they fundraising for kids that have sick hearts and grownups, but they're also teaching our children how to prevent heart disease through diet and exercise. The third thing that we do is for our qualifying schools is that we put PE equipment back into our schools. So this year, we were proud to put $6,300 back into New Hanover County Schools, and we were also able to put in a CPR in schools kit into Williston Middle School from a grant from Ross Stores. So tonight, I'm really here to say thank you, and I'd like to begin and recognize the outstanding support of our schools and coordinators to present a culture of health in this county. The top school for our jumper over heart was Anderson, if Court Fallon or Ms. Carol Piner is here, would you please step forward, we have an award for you. They did an awesome job. You got to come over here and get your. Our second school is Forest Hills Elementary with Sarah Graves as the coordinator and Deborah Greenwood as our principal. she worked really hard, and Mary Paul Bell as the principal. And I would also like to recognize the following schools who participate and did an outstanding job. If you're here, please stand, Alderman Elementary, Blair Elementary, College Park Elementary, Holly Shelter Middle School, Holly Tree Elementary, Myrtle Grove Middle, Noble Middle, Rachel Freeman Elementary, and Sunset Park Elementary. And on behalf of all of our schools, I'd like to present this plaque to the New Hanover Schools, and I appreciate it. And I have two more awards, and I'll be real quick. The last two awards are for national recognition of a fit-friendly school. These two schools had to apply and achieve certain goals to be nationally recognized as a fit-friendly school. Two of the nutrition, they had to do two nutrition activities, six physical activities were required, and one culture of health activity, and that was for staff and students. So I'd like to recognize and congratulate these schools for being nationally honored. Sarah Graves, come back up, and Ms. Greenwood, Forest Hills. And Ms. Rebecca O'Grady, principal of Pine Valley, and Ann Suggles, please come up. On behalf of the American Heart Association, we thank you all for your support, together we really are saving lives.
Thank you, Ms. Quaterbaum. Next item on the agenda is Item Five, is called the audience, we had no one to sign up, so we will go to Item Six, administrative personnel. Dr. Markley?
No administrative recommendations, no head start either.
Okay, we'll jump down to Item Eight, under information, policies on for first reading, Mrs. Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. We have three policies tonight, however, two of the policies, because of the changes in regulations and all, we're going to ask that we waive first reading, so I'll ask Dr. Holliday if he will talk about the student assignment plan first.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and members of the board. We're asking that the board make some changes to the student assignment plan, which is board-approved, along with the grounds for hardship, which are also board-approved, which is the companion to our student assignment board policy. During the latest round of student appeals back in June, it became clear that the board wanted to allow members of the active-duty military to be treated much like we treat our employees, that they only have to prove a substantial inconvenience as opposed to the hardship standard. So we went back and rewrote the board student assignment plan and the guidelines for hardship that so indicate that. We also indicated in the hardship guidelines that we may ask for additional information if we have some questions about parents who are requesting transfer that they don't provide for us. That's in addition to what we were asking for with the military parents. Since that seems to be a consensus of the board, and we wanted to go ahead and enact that, as we get transfer requests during the initial portion of the school year, we're asking Madam Vice Chair if you would waive the first reading and allow the board to vote on that tonight so that we could go ahead and take care of that.
Mr. Hayes, that's.
Is that the, it's not 4405, that's.
No, that's.
Because I didn't see a number, but I guess we need a motion first to waive these, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we'll waive the first reading, so now, any other question, well, we need a motion now to approve.
I move that we approved the motion, I'm sorry, the policy.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
That's the only change, correct?
That's the only, Dr.
The only other thing, Dr. Hickey, was the putting in the portion where we can administration ask for additional information, this is not necessarily about military families, but it's when we have questions about hardship application, we can actually ask the parent to bring us additional information.
One thing too, Dr. Holliday, was the reasons for the request, and I think we added athletics to.
Yes, ma'am.
So that is.
Yes, if there are some, yes, ma'am. If there are some questions about whether or not somebody's moving specifically just for athletics, that we can ask that, we can, also, we can ask, oftentimes, they will tell us certain things, and we would like to be able to verify certain things. So we ask the parent to bring us in maybe a signed affidavit that's been notarized that would give us some additional information to say exactly what they're telling us is true.
Any other comments, questions? I think it's great that we're doing this, because I know sometimes with active-duty military, that one or the other, being away, it's just, we need to do that.
We try to take care of that, but sometimes we miss one or two, but we try to take care of people who are on active-duty military.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved.
The next policy, 45, 4405, is foods, all food sold in the schools, and this, again, we're going to ask to waive a first reading because of the need to have it in place, and that's Mr. Hans, thank you.
I move that we waive the reading. First reading.
Okay, is he second?
Second. I move that we accept the policy.
Do not want it presented?
Well, I thought he was going to do it after we made motion.
What we're doing is just waiving the first reading.
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Hans.
Sure. All right, this is 4405, it's part of the changes to the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act. It allows, it's basically a selection of an option, which we were presented several options, and this is the one that we have chosen. It allows the schools to sell items after the end of the normal lunch period, up through 30 minutes after the end of the school day, as long as they meet the nutrition standards for the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act. And that's the major change, and Dr. Markley has to submit something to the state on the 16th of September, selecting this particular option, and that's why we're asking for a waiver of the first reading.
Don't feel like you got to waive it on my part.
Now, say again, what they're allowing, wasn't there some concern initially about fundraisers, PTA groups, whatever, everything had to meet this?
Anything sold during the school day has to meet the child nutrition, basically, same standards as cafeteria.
Right.
Before four o'clock.
That's correct, it's a change. The previous requirement was that after the end of the final lunch period, anything could be sold, and there were no requirements. Now, there's a legal requirement, based on the change in the law, that we have to meet anything sold in the schools by PTAs or Booster's Club or anything, prior to 30 minutes after the end of the school day, must meet the nutritional standards of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is this just for things that are sold? Would this in any way prevent a parent from bringing cupcakes in for a child's birthday?
I do not believe so, but all, but this is for all food in schools, I remember would, yes, Ms. Smith says that it would prevent that.
It would.
It would not prevent that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was getting really clear from the law of a parent.
If you have a fundraising activity that used to sell.
We're canceling Christmas.
Yeah, fundraising activity, you used to sell candy bars between, you know, two and three o'clock in the afternoon, they cannot do that anymore, they have to meet the nutritional standards.
So the fundraisers that they do, that's a good question, the fundraisers that they do, where they sell cookie dough, or they sell peanuts, products like that, even though they're packaged and delivered to the school, but they're not, they're not sold on campus.
As long as you sell them off property and outside of school hour, you can do that. What this will prevent are morning donut sales, that if a club wanted to do a donut sale, the students coming in in the morning, that's out.
Right. As long as it meets the nutritional standards, it's okay, but if it does not, then it's not allowed.
Nutritional donuts.
Right.
I also have a question, because when she brought up the issue of the cookie dough, I mean, if it is a prepackaged item that is not in a final state, like the cookie dough would not be.
Not ready for consumption, not ready for consumption.
I mean, you can eat it, but I mean.
Well, I eat cookie dough.
But it's not in its, it's not in its real final stage, would they be able to sell that?
Not during the school hours.
But they're not selling it, I mean, they're selling it all campus anyway.
Says all food sold in schools, so if it's food.
No sugar, no fat.
That is stuff, though.
No taste, no flavor.
Absolutely.
Cardboard.
Like I said, it's not healthy, hunger-free, it's hostile, hunger-filled.
In other words, we can sell lettuce.
We get more and more food thrown away because of these new regulations, and it's disgraceful.
The government doesn't, the government doesn't care.
I know that, but it's disgraceful that we have this happening in our schools, and we have no control over it.
Government doesn't care.
So what happens if we just say, no, we're going to sell what we want to sell, just don't bother us?
Then we don't get the money from the federal government.
Does that wipe out the?
They do it by the purse strings, either we obey them.
We're going to pass this one, but it'll be.
Or we don't obey them, and we don't get any money.
We asked that in policy committee, and that's, it would be, it would be a significant financial loss.
Can I ask a follow-up question? When do we have to attest to the state that we have done this?
I have to do it by the 16th.
By the 16th of September.
September. Okay.
About two weeks.
That's my twin's birthday, I'm going to bring a big cake in, I'm not going to sell it, I'll just pass it out to the students.
Oh, you can do that.
I guess we do have to pass it. Maybe we could postpone it for a while, I guess not.
You know, I just, it bothers me, this school district, which in my opinion, has been a leader in doing away with things like trans fats and the, you know, deep fat frying and a lot of other unhealthy activities, that, you know, all of a sudden, here comes almighty government, coming down to us and saying, oh, but we're so much more wiser than you are, and we want to make sure that you adhere to everything that we think everybody else should be adhering to. And, you know, it, that, it really bothers me, I know there's nothing we can do about it, you know, if we didn't, we'd lose, what, about 10 and a half million dollars a year? About 10 and a half million dollars a year.
There'd be no free lunch.
Huh?
There'd be no free lunch.
There'd be no free lunch, there'd be no.
Reduced lunch.
It'd also be no, I mean, a lot of the food we get is government subsidized.
Well, actually, there's no free lunch now.
There is no such thing as a free lunch.
No.
Well, but what's, what was interesting to me was what's classified as healthy, for some, may not necessarily be healthy for others. My, I have a son who has pretty severe lactose intolerance and can't drink milk, but is considered appropriate, you know, for.
Is peanut butter okay?
People are allergic to peanut butter, some people can't have wheat, have gluten allergies, have.
But they, and they don't hook it additive.
Where do you, where do you draw the line?
I mean, when you take out the fat, you replace it with chemicals, or additives, or preservatives, and that's not healthy, so.
Well, it's low sugar, no fat, no salt, no flavor, just like eating cardboard.
You know.
I know you do, you try as best you can, Immer, I know that, I'm not, I'm saying that since you have to abide by these rules.
Immer just gets beaten up, I feel bad.
Thanks for all the cardboard food, though, it's great.
For the record, I didn't say anything, this time.
Well, but the point is, you know, I'm old enough to remember a time when eggs were considered bad for you.
And apples.
And, you know, certain things, and it's all about moderation, quite frankly, I mean, you know, pretty much, I'll defer to the physician on the board.
What I also find interesting is that the government body, whether it be in Raleigh or it be in Washington, says we think government is best, operates best when it operates locally.
Mm-hmm.
And then, they turn right around and send all these mandates down, down to us, and, you know, for example, they may authorize, you know, when was it, tomato ketchup was okay? And we talked about the apples, you know, they banned apples because they thought they had chemicals on them, they banned eggs. And if, and I have been in, and I, with all due respect, some of those breakfasts, with those sugary cereals, I have to wonder about, but in any event, I think I've been on my high horse long enough tonight.
Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Reluctantly.
Reluctantly. Opposed? If passes.
I might sign it.
Pardon?
I've got a form, I've got to sign, on the 16th.
And the last policy for first reading has been to the board for first reading, but we sent it back to committee, and we have some more revisions. This is Policy 4500, and Mr. Hans?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, this is the policy for community use of school facilities, and the board sent it back to policy committee, the policy committee took a look at it again, and actually added a paragraph that you'll see on their paragraph. added a paragraph that you'll see, um, on their paragraph number twenty-two, I think, was added in, added in its entirety, uh, since, um, since the last time you, you saw this particular policy. And it has to do with political films or political utilization of our school by a candidate, or something, uh, for a public office. The other changes in the, in the policy are, um, changes in, in the word from leased to licensed, and I think you saw that be, before. Uh, we had some of those that Mr. Bullard inserted to make it, um, better for us from a liability standpoint. We also added in paragraph, um, four, we added, um, a line in there about the thirty-day prepay and thirty-day, uh, preauthorization for, um, to give the superintendent a flexibility in allowing someone to use our schools if they ask within the thirty-day, uh, time limit, identified in the, in the policy itself. So, it is, this is for first reading.
I have one question. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I have a quick question. Uh, paragraph three, dealing with Brogdon Hall, says use of Brogdon Hall shall be available only for athletic events that do not require modification of the facility. And that's, what about other athletic facilities? I, I mean, I, I guess I'm just asking, why is Brogdon Hall, uh, specifically named?
Because we've had, um, we had in the past several issues with the, the use of Brogdon Hall for something other than athletic venue, and many requests for it to be used and to be modified for different venues. And the board at the time this was put together indicated that they wanted to limit it, just like we limited many Evans for performan- for performing arts. We limited Brogdon Hall for athletic use.
But I'm, I'm thinking, and I don't know whether you've had this problem or not, but I mean, Ashley's auditorium is a good size, and it's air-conditioned, and doesn't the potentiality exist that, uh, somebody might wanna use, I mean, some of these events you're talking about that in the past have wanted to go to Brogdon Hall, that they might wanna do the same thing at Ashley, or, I can't imagine Laney and Hogwood because they're so small, but, uh, Ashley has, holds about twenty-five hundred, uh, three thousand in its aud- in its gymnasium, and, uh, you know, is air-conditioned? Why wouldn't we just say athletic facilities, period?
You, you could.
I'm just asking.
Hmm, that's a good one.
Instead of signaling Brogdon Hall only out.
Can I ask another question about Brogdon Hall?
Shall we?
I would just say, instead of just saying, uh, the use of Brogdon Hall, the use of, of any, uh, any athletic facilities in the New Hanover County school system shall be available only for athletic events. And then you finish out your paragraph the way it is.
May I ask another question about Brogdon Hall? Does this pre- nor- we used to have quite, quite, in, in the near past, we had, uh, concerts that were there at Brogdon Hall. I know we've had gospel concerts, and we've had rap concerts, and all sorts of different concerts. Would this prevent the use of Brogdon Hall for that?
It would.
Well, that's going to stop a venue, the only other venue that's really large for a concert would be Kenan Hall, or Kenan Aut-
Any Evans.
I'm talking about the, at the university, the athletic facility at the university.
Trask.
Trask.
Yes, thank you. It seems like this would greatly limit the ability of the community to use Brogdon Hall as they've had it in the past.
It would limit it, it is, and, and this was put in there specifically, uh, at the board's request, uh, to limit the use of Brogdon Hall in that respect. If you recall.
But my other question is, the granting of licenses for the use of the board's property for a time period not greater than one year, does that mean that it cannot be renewed at the end of a year, that you only have one year, and that's it, you're out, no, no recourse?
Now, we, you do it again, if you could, we will not do it for longer than a year.
But it could be renewed at the end of that year.
Mr. Bullard, yes, Mr. Bullard put that in there so that we, uh, do not do anything for longer than a year. But if you'll look at the, um, in the policy itself, it limits it, we don't, we don't, um, authorize any use for longer than about a three or four month period, and then we, we will re, uh, they will have to reapply to use the facility. Because we don't want to lock up a facility so that no one else can use it, uh, for one particular, um, one particular venue, or one particular use. If somebody comes in there and wants to use it for a season, um, then they can use it for three or four months for a season, and then they will have to reapply.
We've had churches use a number of our facilities.
But they do it, but, but we don't allow that, they, we renew it after a period of time, and they reapply, and, um,
So, when they go in, why is-
We don't guarantee them that they will have it for a year, or two years, or anything, or anything like that.
What is the time period that they'll get it for initially?
It's about a four month, about a three or four month period, they'll get it initially for that period. If they get, if they, if they want it for that particular period, and we cannot, we don't guarantee that they will have necessarily the same facility when they reapply. If for some reason we need to rest that particular facility, we have the ability to offer them a different venue, so that we can rest that particular facility. What we don't want to happen is for someone, be it a church or someone like that, to be in there for a long period of time. We should, the, the facilities of the schools should be used for a temporary nature, and not a permanent, uh, location for that particular, uh, venue.
I think of the church that was at Roland Grice. They put in a sound system, they were a good tenant, in that they, they improved the school. And I hate to see us limit that to, limit that in the future.
We've had that discussion before.
I know, and I've always been opposed to it.
You know, I mean, you just cannot camp out in one of our facilities for three, four, five years. I mean, they chose, if they put in a sound-
Why?
Huh?
Why?
Because if you're a church, we, we say we will give you an opportunity to build your congregation, but at some point in time, they need to build their own facility.
What are they hurting, especially the, the instance that I gave, where they improved the school, they were a good tenant? Why were they in any way harming the system?
I didn't say they were harming the system, I just simply said that at some point in time, it is not the responsibility to New Hanover County school system to provide any organization, religious or otherwise, a, a locale for years and years and years.
I don't, since we've had such positive relationships in the past, I'm very much opposed to this particularly thing. I might be in a minority on the board, but I'm opposed to it.
No, I, I think I agree with Ms. Kavanaugh, you know, I, I wouldn't say, uh, again, they're paying rent, and that's a good use of the school's resources, cause it brings money back into the system, that we can use to educate children that we otherwise wouldn't have. Now, I, while we're not primarily in the business of leasing property-
Well, if a new church wants to come and start, and they're looking for a facility in the same location-
Well, I agree, I agree, as long as we give everyone an equal opportunity. So, as Mr. Hans was saying, as long as we have a policy that allows, uh, rotation of venues, so that at the end of a year lease, let's say, uh, two, two different groups, who knows, one may be Christian, one may be otherwise, wants to use that facility, then it's a lottery. And we, we don't give preference to one group over another, that way we don't, uh, you know, we're not biased based on how we feel about things, but I, I think we should consider that, unless Mr. Bullard, and he, he's not here to ask, had a, had a different reason for inserting that one year, and there may be a legal reason, that I'm unaware of, that you don't wanna give people a, a property right to it, or a right, and that might be something-
That is, he put the, he put the years time in there, we've never done anything for a year, we've always, it's always less than a year. But we've always renewed where we can, or offered another venue if there was a conflict for renewal at a particular site. And we have had, um, churches be in there for multiple years over a period of time, two or three or four, typically not longer than that, because they are looking for a more permanent situation, and they do move out.
So, so I think to Ms. Kavanaugh's concerns, this, this policy, and I, I do not think is meant to prohibit an organization for remaining in a facility for greater one, than one year, but it's making it so that they don't have a right to continued use of the facility.
I understand that, and I agree with that, but I wanna make sure that that's what the policy, that's how the policy is interpreted, and that they do have an, an ability, if there's no other takers, to continue that lease, and as long as they are good tenant, and there's not a need for the system to have that particular venue. I wanna make sure that this policy does not prevent the continuation of a lease.
It does not prevent the continuation or the reapplication, um, of a particular, uh, organization to use our facilities. However, we do, uh, reserve the right to move them if we have to.
Absolutely.
And we will allow them to, to continue to use the facility, although we do remind them that it is not a permanent solution for them. And one of the things that we run into over periods, over long periods of time, and long periods of use, is our own employees who have to be there. They get very tired, and they do not want to go in there continuously on weekends, every single weekend, and open it up for them, being a particular church. So, we run into some personnel and staffing issues as well, in that when, when there is a long-term, uh, use of a, one single facility, that's why we want the ability to rotate the venues around.
Why does it has, have to be the custodian of that school? Why can't another custodian from another school open it up? Why does it have to be that particular school?
They don't necessarily have the code, so they don't know, they don't, uh, they're not as familiar with mechanical systems of that particular school, and they won't have the security codes, uh, for that school.
There's no way we can train someone to do that?
We could, if they were, if they were willing to do it, and if the principal were willing to, uh, give them the security codes of the school. But I have to be honest with you, I would not want the security codes for the schools necessarily prolifer- to be prolifer- to proliferate out throughout the school, and through other employees. There are reasons that we limited the security codes to the employees of a particular school.
I just think that there ought to be some sort of way that we could have trustworthy employees who could be used, and we wouldn't have, because I can understand how a custodian of a particular school may wanna go to his own church, and he wouldn't wanna be there to open up the school, so that's why I don't think, I don't understand why we couldn't have a trusted individual be given those codes.
So, that puts an extra burden on the school system.
No, it doesn't put an extra burden-
They would have to find someone, and what if it's a late notice of the person that can't be there, and then you have to find someone else, that, who would do all of this?
I would think that you could have a pool of individuals who could, you could have a regular person for the school and a backup person.
You typically do, but those, those are usually employees of that particular school.
But ha- things must have really changed, cause I know years ago, when I was a school teacher, I was all, the system had a painting crew, they had all kind of job opportunities for employees to make money, extra money, which most of them were looking for, so I would think there would be some way that rather than, like Ms. Kavanaugh's point, if, if they wanna attend their own church, there ought to be some way that they, another individual, that, that no one wants to make extra, are they all making so much money, they don't want extra money, or?
It sounds to me like the system doesn't wanna do it.
No, I'm serious.
No, I think, I, I, that's a cop-out.
What is a cop-out?
To suggest that, that-
That employees do not wanna make extra money on the weekends?
Right, right, to, to say that, what he is saying is, we have security codes-
I understand that.
And, you know, like it or not, when you start spreading these security codes around, I mean, I'm not saying people are dishonest, or not trustworthy, but when you, the more people who know the security codes for the schools, the greater the possibility that those security codes will get out. And I just think you're putting a greater burden on the school system, you know, if, if, as Mr. Hans says, when he gets into a situation where, you know, the custodians are tired of every Sunday having go over there and open the school up, and be there, uh, you know, while they have their church service. As he said, I mean, he offers them the opportunity to move. All I'm simply saying is, I have no problem with churches using our facilities, I just don't want them camping out.
I don't call it camping out.
Well.
Any other, well, it's on for a first reading, so we can-
Uh, yeah. I, I have a couple of things, Mr. Hayes. If you'll remember, the policy committee consists of three board members, and if two board members on that committee decide that they want to delete or add something, then it comes before the board for first reading. So, if you look at, um, page one, under number one-
Now, cause there's about fourteen pages here, and I'm having trouble finding-
The first page, page one.
Of, of the first-
Of policy forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred.
So, page thirty-three or forty-seven.
Yeah, that, that's very helpful, yeah.
That's what you needed, right?
Thirty-three or forty-seven, okay. I'm sorry, no.
You got it now?
I got it.
Okay. So, under number one, where, um, when it was presented for res- first reading, we took out this additionally, only staff fees would be charged to the film industry. And Dr. Hickey suggested that we bring it back to committee and find some kind of compromise, of which we didn't, we couldn't. But how do we, a- and I don't know how the other board members feel, but I would like to have that back in for discussion, when we bring it back.
For the film commu- to be able to use it, or not use it?
To not be charged.
Leave it as it is, before we've-
Okay.
Deleted it.
Well, I would think that when it comes, after the first reading, if, if we're noticing some things now that, that we disagree with, or whatever, like Ms. Kavanaugh was pointing out, like you're pointing out, then, I think then we could, the full board could amend, if, if you want, you know, you could say, I support this, and we add this back in to-
When it comes back for the final reading?
I mean, that's my solution, is in-
Like a line item veto, is that what you're saying?
Well, many times with a policy that, uh, they amend it, or they'll, the amended version, and that would be an amended version that we'd vote on.
Yeah, we would be able to amend it, just as the policy committee would be able to amend it.
Well, my thinking is, the policy committee recommends a policy, even if it's a two-to-one vote, and then the board, and our board then discusses, if it's a two-to-one against the policy, then I assume it doesn't get to us. In other words, the policy committee votes two-to-one not to bring a policy to the board, then we wouldn't see it.
But we would know what was taken out.
I'm talking about the policy itself, if they, yeah, well, not necessarily, you wouldn't necessarily know what's taken out.
Well, generally, they tell us that what a policy has changed, what was it, what has been added. They do it in red, writing, and so forth, and I would think at that point, any board member, cause otherwise, two, two individuals could stop anything.
Could hold it hostage.
I mean, it's, I, unless I'm mistaken-
That's the way committees operate.
Right, but I, but in the past, we've always had the ability to amend a policy.
We've always also been, I don't know of a case in my twenty years that I can think of right to second, where the policy committee did not bring a policy forward for the board to discuss. But my point simply is, that's exactly what they do. The policies committee's job is to, is to negotiate, develop, create a policy to be brought forward to the board, for the po- board then to discuss and take an ultimate vote on.
Well, we have no hostages right now, so-
I didn't mean that negatively.
Can we figure out, like, what we're gonna do with this policy, are we gonna?
No, I agree with everything Mr. Higgins said, as far as they bring it forward, it has never been known not to be brought forward for discussion. That's what the first reading's all about, in my opinion. It's a first reading of the policy, to see what has been added, to see what has been deleted, and it, what the full board, already comments have been made about the other, uh, policies. Then I think it's appropriate also looking for this one.
And it also ought to be noted that in virtually ninety-five percent of the cases, all we're doing is modifying existing policy.
Right.
So, it's not like we're creating new policies that are-
Well, you, you're right, generally, as, as things change, the law, or whatever, then we have to modify our policies to, to conform.
Well, the issue here is, there's more than one change to this particular policy.
Right, that's what I was getting at.
So, if you were, if you were to bring it forward, if we were to bring this forward and say, we strike this line item- So if you were, if you were to bring it forward, if we were to bring this forward and say we strike this line item and that is the only changes being made to the policy, then the board could certainly discuss it and, and vote it down. And say, we don't accept this policy recommendation. But the, the problem is, is that we have several changes to this policy. So do you want to, do you want to take them line by line?
I think most of us, the shells, the use, licensee.
No, we're talking about the, the film industry, Brogdon Hall.
Oh.
There's a waiving of the thirty day requirement in here.
The year requirement, political.
Oh, okay.
There, there's a lot of information, there's a lot going on in this policy right now.
So substitute changes, I think, for, for this one, maybe we do have to take it one by one.
Okay. I think we, yeah, I think I agree, we have to, we have to vote, when we vote, on second reading, I suppose.
Right.
On each one of the policies, each one of the changes. Because we can't, because we need a policy on this, we can't just vote it up or down. We can't, we can't just vote it down, then we have no policy at all, which does, is not very helpful.
Well, what the policy committee will do is take the, any suggestions or any discussion about these issues back to the policy committee and make, make changes as such. And we may disagree, particularly on that first line item that we're talking about, but I think we could probably find consensus on the rest of it. It's just going to be that one particular area that I'm sure is going to be some disagreement.
Okay, so it's going to go back to the policy committee?
Could I suggest one more thing on page three of three, Mr. Hayes? Number twelve, Dr. Markley, where it says the, the board shall be provided a log of contracts on an annual basis. Can we give a month there so that we know when to expect this? Because often when we say annual basis, sometimes we don't, we don't hear. Not necessarily for this situation, but sometimes there's so much to remember to report to the board.
We can, we can do it any month that you would like.
Well, I'll pick a slow month for you because...
July's probably the best one.
There is no slow month for me.
July's the end of the fiscal year in summertime.
We can do it in, we can do it in July or August, either way you would like it. That would probably be the most appropriate, because then you would know what has transpired the, the prior fiscal year.
July it is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this is going to go back to the policy committee and certainly you are welcome to attend, all the board members, to get any kind of clarification or input.
Ms. Nichols, can I make a friendly suggestion?
Pardon?
Can I make a suggestion to the policy committee? Item three, where Brogdon Hall was only going to be used for athletic events, as Ms. Kavanaugh pointed out, I, I wouldn't have noticed that. So I don't know if the policy committee took the opportunity to discuss whether or not they wanted to allow Brogdon Hall's use for other venues. And I think that might be an appropriate place to discuss that.
I don't, I don't recall having that discussion.
No.
Actually, that's, that's the existing wording, I mean, that's the...
Correct.
But I assume, I assume when it was written, Brogdon Hall was the only facility of its kind in the county. And all I simply am saying is, we now have, actually, I think the interpretation might well be, because that's not, the only red line in that thing is the word use.
Well, I think we may, the, the board may have had an untoward experience with a venue other than athletic. And so they may have put that phraseology in there to prevent its use for, say, concerts.
You know, you've got best foot forward is in there, you've got...
But they don't, yeah.
But you've also, I mean, you know, Brogdon Hall has a stage.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
And, I mean...
What I'm saying is, you may want to discuss that as a...
Yeah, I think y'all might want to discuss it and not just limit it to athletic events. I understand that you don't want it modified.
That makes total sense.
But I think you ought to include Ashley's facility also.
And we would appreciate any written comments from the board to the committee, would be helpful as well.
Mr. Hance, does that mean that Brogdon Hall couldn't be used for best foot forward?
I'm sorry?
Does that mean Brogdon Hall could not be used for best foot forward?
No, no, that's, this is, this is only outside use of the facilities. Nothing to do with inside use or with governmental use. The county could use it for something, you know, but this is only outside agency use of our facilities.
Thank you.
And those sort of public policies for first reading, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. Item nine, superintendent's report.
Nothing.
Item ten, under consensus items, item A, personnel, appendix B, Dr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we request the board approve the personnel as presented.
Same old.
Second.
Questions?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item B, change of school assignment, appendix C, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. These students are, their parents are employed by the neighboring school districts and they have received a release from, they have received acceptance from those school districts and we're asking that you release them, this is just a routine release.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item C, budget amendments, appendix D, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I request the board's approval of the amendments as presented.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item eleven, under old business, item A, ACES, the advisory council for exceptional students, membership, appendix E, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you recall, I asked this be approved at a previous board meeting, but since that time, we've lost a member and had to add another member. So our, we have to get board approval for that, so we're asking that you approve this change.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item B, policy's on for second reading, Mrs. Nichols.
We have policy, the new policy, role of board members in handling complaints. Policy eleven hundred mission, vision and goals. And policy seventy-four forty-seven, graduation ceremonies. And policy seventy-five fifty-two, field trips, which were all presented for first reading. And the only addition would be, and seventy-five fifty-two for field trips. And Dr. Smith, did you want to add anything there?
Well, yes ma'am, thank you. We made some additions to this policy to bring greater clarification around the parameters for which principals would approve field trips. Additionally, we have transitioned to a new system for tracking our field trips. And we wanted to make sure that language was included as well. And then we added additional information to make sure that schools were aware that the board sponsored field trips. That information would be made available by July of each year.
And that was not listed on the, this policy, but we will, at the July board meeting, Dr. Smith or that department will share the approved field trips that the board sponsors.
Thank you.
So I ask that we approve these as a group unless there's any other confirmed question?
Any problem with, anyone with approving these as a group? Is there a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Oh, is there a second? Ms. Kavanaugh, I take your side, Ms. Kova, made the motion, Ms. Kavanaugh?
Actually, the chair's request to be approved becomes the motion, so you need to second.
Okay. Ms. Kavanaugh, I think here's a second. Any comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I say something?
Thank you.
I really like the role of the board members in handling complaints. I'm sure that was difficult to come to consensus about, but I think it's a very well worded policy.
Well, we worked hard on it, just as we will with the facility use, with your help.
Could you tell me when the next policy committee meeting is?
We haven't established that, because we need to see how many more policies will come before the committee, but will, you know, thank you.
Okay, item twelve, under new business, design consultant agreement for Northeast Elementary School, appendix G, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there's a change which you should see at your, at your place. There was a change in, in the amount of the, the policy. And what is on the screen should, is correct. And this is design consultant agreement for the new Northeast Middle School, and this is for the design through construction documents. And we're asking approval for four hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Move for approval.
Oh, elementary school, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
What did I miss?
I don't know.
I'm sorry.
He said middle school.
I said middle school and I meant elementary school, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item B, athletic field services contract, appendix H, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is athletic fields, the mowing and cutting athletic fields plus the adding of chemicals and herbicides as necessary for the athletic fields and slotting. Two different contracts, one vendor, and recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions?
There are a couple of contractual issues that Wayne has to work out on that. So this would be approval pending Wayne's ability to finalize that contract.
For the, for the actual signature on the contract.
I have one question, Mr. Hayes. Mr. Hance, where it said New Hanover High School's practice field, where is that?
That's over behind Williston.
That's not Robert Strange, that's not what they're doing for Williston, okay.
This is behind, behind Williston and behind...
I know where that is, but it wasn't spelled out in here and I just didn't want any...
It's behind Williston and Gregory writing it.
I didn't want those guys when they come to cut saying, oh, we did that one.
It's Thirteenth and N, isn't it?
So should we not say where that is? Because what about, don't they practice out at Legion Stadium as well? That's confusing.
This, that's been known as the New Hanover High School practice field for decades. And we have, we also have it on a map, which is depicted, which shows it on a property accounting drawing that specifically shows them color-coded which ones to do.
Oh, okay.
And that's part of the contract.
Do you have the comments?
This is, this is one of the, an example of one of those things that, that's frustrating to me. I, I realize we need to have, and this is just a common, a comment on, on this. I know, I realize we have to have maintenance for, for our facilities or for our fields. But a hundred and sixty thousand dollars is a lot of money to spend on, on something that's not in, directly impacting instruction. And so it's this kind of stuff that really, that you hate to see come along.
Buy a whole lot of goats for that, couldn't you?
You could buy a lot, you could buy a lot of instructional materials for the classroom and...
And I think, I think there is a belief that the athletics and the competition and the camaraderie that comes out of athletics, it's not teaching math, it's not teaching English, but it's, it is building character and other attributes that we want to have. I mean, so I, you know, I, it, it's one of those things, I mean, you know, do you want to paint the building? I mean, the building will function if it's not painted, but it's, it's, it's just part of maintaining, I think, a overall visual school system that is attractive to visitors who come here. And that's the kinds of things that help attract new industry and new businesses to come to New Hanover County.
Well, I understand it, I don't have to like it, but I understand it.
I understand what you're saying, but it's just, you know, it's kind of a fact of the volume.
Yeah, I totally understand the, the value in, in athletics. But I also consider that to be secondary to the primary mission of the school system. It, it does contribute, but, you know, when we have teachers who are having difficulty finding materials and, you know, don't have what they need to teach in the classroom, to spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to mow the grass, really, just, it's a hard, it's a tough pill to swallow, it really is.
Create students who have the highest GPA amongst of our, of our students.
May I ask a question, Mr. Hance?
Yes.
Mr. Hance, this was put out for bid, right?
This was, this was a qualification-based selection, but price was considered. And this is the low, this is the low bidder.
And exactly what does this cover?
This covers our athletic venues, specific schools, and it covers the mowing and trimming and cutting of the grass and the cleanup of the fields.
How many schools and how many fields?
I think they're listed on here. They're all listed here, includes Hogard, it includes the practice field at New Hanover. It includes Hogard's baseball and softball fields, football stadium, the track area, long jump area. It includes Laney High School's baseball field, softball fields, football stadium and the track and the field area. It includes Nobles' baseball field, softball field, football and soccer fields. It includes Holly Shelter, Holly Shelter's baseball field, softball field and football fields. It includes Trask's baseball field. And let's see, it includes Williston's middle school field in the back of the school.
So it's two hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-two cent for this year?
It include, no, it is, it is a hundred and sixty thousand and a one hundred and thirty-three dollars for fourteen and fifteen. That is the low, the low bid. You have to add those two together, there are two different, two different awards. One is for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seventeen dollars.
Right.
As for the cutting of the fields, and then for the...
Okay, I've got it.
So, so these are just the, the competition fields, correct?
Yes, these are the competition, pretty much the competition fields that we have, yes.
Sorry.
I can't help but think that there's a, that there's a, an opportunity here. We could expand our career tech education into lawn maintenance, because apparently there's quite a bit of money to be made, especially with the number of golf courses we have so close to us. We might, we might be able to be self-sustaining.
We also spend money to cut grass at the schools, I mean, you know, to maintain the facilities.
And we have been looking for the best way, because we've worked, partnered with the, the county.
Yeah, that's supposed to be saving us money in the midst of it.
The county does everything except our athletic venues, except this, the county does everything else. Before that, we had, we had about...
I'm sorry? We had pages of this with large amounts of money.
Yes, large amounts of money. The, the cost just to cut the grass at the schools was between three and four hundred thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken. We had a grounds crew, a total of about thirteen individuals. They, it's physical impossibility, because we have between nine hundred and, and a thousand acres of, of land, which we are responsible for. So we determined that we needed to contract it out, and we contracted it out for a period of time. And then we have, since that time, we have teamed with the county, and the county does everything, the county parks and we do it, and we, we get, hopefully we get a reduced price for that over all the county funds, because it comes from local funds. So hopefully, the overall price is reduced price based on economy of scale, because they are doing more fields and more areas. And they have more than one contractor that is currently providing that service for the schools and for the county, Parks and Gardens Department. And, but they do all the, the cutting around our schools. This is strictly for the athletic venues, and the county has discussed doing this, but they're not really ready to do something like this at, at this time. So they want us to continue to contract this out at this time.
Because we have saved money overall when we partnered, I know Dr. Hickey was on the Parks, well, I think it was Parks and Rec, then that's Parks and Gardens. And I'm still on there, in fact, we have a meeting in the morning, eight o'clock, and I'm going to thank them, because have you noticed in front of, what they did in front of Ashley High School, Mini Evans, Murray Middle School, all the posts and so forth that are on there? Because that area was just constantly being torn up, people parking, have you seen the post down there?
Never been there.
Well, I asked them sometime back and they have extended that on down past Anderson Elementary, so now it goes on down. So it's going to improve the appearance of that area. So I think it's a good partnership, and you're right, Ms. Kova, it is a lot of money, but we're also by partnering with the county. And what we're doing at the other facilities, it's, it's saving money, but you're, you're right, it is still a large amount. If we're going to offer these venues, and of course, the schools also use these facilities for, you know, PE and other things other than just competitive athletics. I think we had a motion, a second, any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's approved. Thank you. Item C, Daktronics Soul Source Resolution, appendix J, Don Brinson.
Request the board approve the Daktronics Soul Source Resolution for a scoreboard at Hogard Softball Field. Request the board approve the Dactronic cell source resolution for scoreboard at Hogard softball field.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item D, we're omitting. Item thirteen, we're omitting. Our next item on the agenda, item fourteen, is our second call to the audience. We've had one individual sign it, Mr. Bruce Schell.
Welcome. I don't think you heard me, I said welcome. Welcome.
I think this is where I go, right? I, I'll be, thank you. I'll be very brief. I'm here as a citizen to talk briefly about the bond issue referendum coming up November the fourth. You know the needs. I think it's your study and documentation as a, as a board that the county commissioners have a lot of fun to put it out for vote on November fourth. I, over the years, worked with debt and debt service payments and its impact on the citizens for many years. And as I looked at what was being communicated, I had some concerns that we were talking about apples and oranges and at least what was being conveyed through the public hearing August eleventh. I appeared before the county commissioners, and I have looked at the county's amortization schedule, which is their principal interest payments for the existing debt. And I've looked at their calculations for what the new debt, if everything passes, will cost. And I have no issue with their calculations. My issue is that it depends on how you ask the question. If the question is, what will it cost for this new debt, you get a high number. If your question is, well, what will be the overall net impact? If you take the high number and you subtract, the debt is being paid off over time. So you've got twenty-year debt, and you've got the first six years of your twenty-year debt as it relates to the school bonds, that is challenging. That's when you've got fairly high principal interest payments, and the county principal interest payments are dropping dramatically. So it's that six-year challenge. And the debt goes up and the existing debt goes down. The net in your worst year is six million dollars. The value of a penny on the county's tax rate is three million dollars. So your worst case is two cents. I've tried to make that point. I've talked with the county commissioners. I do believe they understand it. And I think one of you said earlier, if you look at the, maybe it was, it was Dr. Markley who had said, if you look at the history of tax increases in New Hanover County, they've been small, they've been minimal. And the reason for that is that being a triple-A bond rated county with a diverse economy, we're growing rapidly in terms of property types and sales tax. That's three-fourths of the money that's used to pay things. And so I just wanted to appear to make it clear that the impact of a positive vote, that people have to decide for themselves whether they want to vote for or against bonds. I'm not up here for that. But I am up here to say that if you do choose to vote for it, the impact on the tax rate is minimal if we're talking specifically about the bonded debt. And the reason we're talking about that is that a bond referendum pledges the taxing authority of the county. So the citizens have a right to know what it's going to cost if that particular item passes. So that's why I'm here tonight to reassure you folks that, that the impacts are known and are, you know, not to see two cents in any given year and then drops off in the last fourteen years. So actually drop that tax rate back down if they chose to. I know they got more iPhones to deal with than just schools because I have some experience here. But I am saying that I wanted, I wanted to speak to you tonight. I will not be here for your October meeting, and I felt compelled to come speak. So thanks for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item fifteen on the agenda, any correspondence, any board members would like to share?
Actually, yeah, I do have something I'd like to share. I, I found out, I guess it was a week and a half ago, maybe. As you're aware, the, the Common Core bill that was passed and signed by the governor, a academic standards review commission has been, has been set up as a result of that bill, and I have been appointed by the House membership to that committee.
That's so good.
I will be serving on that committee in the very near future.
We couldn't have a better representative.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Why don't you share with the board about that place that you were telling me about you went to a few days ago that you thought would be helpful to the children of New Hanover County?
Thank you. I almost missed the meeting tonight because I was, I've been out of town since last week. And I told Ms. Nichols I may or may not make it because I got literally back in town around four something, ran home, changed clothes, and, and came over here. But I visited a facility up in Stanton, Virginia. And, and it's really one of the most, it is just a unique educational opportunity, I think, for young people. And I was talking to them about groups that go there now. I'd love to see our children be able to, to go there. I know they go to DC and so forth, and I don't know how this could be worked out. I'm not really recommending it, but I've never seen anything like it. And as a former history teacher, I learned things just walking through. It's a two-mile journey through this thing. But it's, it's really the history of, of this country back in the sixteen, seventeen hundreds. The immigrant groups that came here, there are, they're not reproductions. For example, a lot of the immigrants were from Ireland, so they have a house there that was actually built in the sixteen hundreds that they brought over here piece by piece and reassembled to show the young people and others as they go through this. What they wanted to show were the immigrants, where they came from, the way they lived. And then once they came to this country, there are different sections. And then there's the new frontier, the culture, so to speak, of the blending of these other countries into the blending of the American culture. And it showed, for example, they had an eighteen forty schoolhouse. It wasn't a replica. It was one that was built in eighteen forty, taken apart, put together there. I have pictures I can show you later.
Well, didn't you say there's a number of nationalities that had houses?
Well, yeah, there were, there was from Ireland, for example. There was a house from Ireland, England, Germany. These were houses that were built in sixteen, seventeen hundreds that were brought over here and reassembled from different places around the world. So as they go through this facility, and there are people there that know their history of, of that locale, and they share the history of what it was like to live in that time period. Then they have a seventeen forty settler's house showing what it was like once they came here. Of course, I told them to correct their history. They were talking about the first permanent, well, they did, they didn't say that. They just said first English settlement. And when I walked, I walked around, I said, look, I'm from North Carolina, you need to change that. You ever heard of Roanoke Island? I said, you know, we had a settlement there. They said, well, all those people died, it didn't count. I said, well, I don't know if that's true or not. But anyway, I wanted to correct.
Where was this? Where did you say this was?
Stanton, Virginia.
Stanton, Virginia.
Mm-hmm. But, but then they showed the schoolhouse from eighteen forty, a house in eighteen twenty, eighteen fifties. But it's just a blending of cultures, and it was really interesting. I mean, they had big signs up as far as why the Irish came here when they did, for example, why the Germans immigrated here. And there were religious reasons, financial reasons, taxes they were paying, disasters in the countries they came from. But I've never, I've really never seen anything like that. It was a very...
I thought it was interesting.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, may I, the next item on the agenda is the announcements of when we're going to be meeting. We have postponed our October meeting from October the seventh to October the fourteenth due to a forum that four of us were going to have to attend. I've become aware of a meet and greet that several of the board members have to attend on the fourteenth between four-thirty and six-thirty. And I was wondering if there's any way that we could have a delayed start of the board meeting?
Oh, the fourteenth?
Yes. It has been recommended at six-thirty, an hour delay.
Seven fourteen? See, I've been out there, I haven't checked messages or anything. I have no problem if you want to change it.
Is it, is it a two-hour block of time? Or is this just a floating type thing where you're in and out?
It's at, it's at Sher Tyler's, and it's a, I think it's a barbecue.
Some block of time.
So you can't scoot out.
So would seven o'clock be a better time than six-thirty?
Yeah.
And go old school?
So you want to start the meeting at seven o'clock?
You like old school days?
If you wouldn't mind.
You can come have some barbecue.
Got to bring food with you when you come.
Does that going to impact on the children? Can we do six-thirty at least? Because you don't have to stay through the whole meet and greet, do you?
I don't think so.
No, it's, it's, I don't think so. I mean, I'm not even sure I'm going.
Six-thirty would be fine, but me...
Yeah, we just don't want the children who are going to be presenting here and singing to, to have to wait, you know.
Why don't we compromise six-thirty, how's that? Is that...
That's fine.
That's fine.
Do we need a vote for that, or can we just have a consensus?
I think we can just agree to have our meeting, the next one, October fourteenth at six-thirty.
I would like to thank those board members who aren't going to have to take part in this event for being so congenial and moving it. Thank you.
I thought I heard food was coming though.
I didn't even know it was barbecue.
I thought that was part of the agreement.
Well, I will do my best to get some takeout planned.
Some barbecue, please.
If not, I'll stop by Smithfield's and get you some.
Okay, so the, but we also have the District Two meeting of the North Carolina School Boards Association. That's Thursday of this week, September the fourth, four P.M., and that's being hosted over at Heidi Trask High School in Rocky Point.
So when and where do we meet for us to go together, or are we going together?
We're going to go together if we...
I'll be traveling snapper because I've got a bond meeting that night. I have to leave early to go to a bond presentation.
Yeah, I'll be leaving from work, so.
Are you going to be just meeting?
See, Lacy, you weren't going, you were going separately, right?
Okay, so it just...
I may not make it there.
Okay, so just be, so we don't, we don't need to coordinate things.
But I can't go back.
Are you going, Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yeah, but I can try.
No, but I'm just saying there will only be the three of us then, probably.
We're going to meet somewhere, I'll drive.
We can meet, well, we can discuss this then, since there's not the full board going and...
Who's going, I'm attending and Kavanaugh.
And Ms. Adams. But you're going separately.
I'm going separately.
Yeah.
Just send us an email, Ms. Adams, and we'll, we'll meet and ride together.
Okay. Did we agree, Dr. Markley, that we were going to have a work session on the sixteenth?
We've got it scheduled.
September sixteenth.
Pretty light agenda at the moment. So if we need to...
I can't come.
You were going, you're going to be in New Zealand.
Yeah, on my way.
Sure and cheap.
And what time will we be meeting for that?
That's a work session time, it's four o'clock.
Four o'clock?
Yes.
And so the work session will be four o'clock on the sixteenth.
Are there any receptions or awards dinners or anything that's coming up that we need to know about?
Now, this, not this early in the year.
Okay.
Not yet. There is one other event that is coming up. We have two groups that are going to go to Raleigh. There's a vocational, they have an opening at their new vocational high school at the old Coke plant. LaShawn, Dr. Smith's app is going to take some folks up on October seventh to look at the instructional piece of it. And then Mr. Anderson and I will be going up on the seventeenth to look at it from a facility standpoint in terms of the possibility of doing something here down the road. So if you're interested in attending either one of those sessions, either let myself or Dr. Smith know.
What time will y'all be leaving?
Uh, Dr. Smith, your session is what time?
We're due to run at thirty, so I can't be around until six.
And Dr. and Mr. Anderson, what's our, on the seventeenth? Nine, yeah, so we'll be leaving here at seven.
Can I back up a second? The, the work session, September the fifteenth?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, I kept hearing the fifteenth, that's the reason, thank you.
And the only other thing is policy committee, but you're not, don't know a time and date yet?
Well, more than likely it'll be at the October fourteenth meeting, but we don't have, other than facilities policy, we don't have another list of... But I'm sure we'll get some. Mr. Hens is working on his theories.
Let's try and save with the others that might want to attend that policy committee if we're going to have to be that...
Yeah, I think we tend it.
Oh, okay. We'll work through it. We'll make sure that if you want to...
Any other announcements?
That's a good point.
Derek's motion to adjourn, and I second it.
Ms. Hickey, Dr. Hickey's motion to adjourn, is it?
I would like to return.
And Ms. Kova, second it? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.
You, seven o'clock.